Good evening, everyone. Today is Monday, June 7th, 2021. This is the regular meeting of the City of Asbury Park Planning Board. Ms. Kerzak, will you please call us to order?
Yes, I've called this meeting to order. The following meeting is being conducted by electronic means in accordance to the Open Public Meetings Act, Chapter 231, Public Law 1975, amended 2020, which explicitly permits a public body to conduct meetings electronically during your state of emergency. Adequate notice of this meeting have been provided to the Coaster and Asbury Park Press. All notices are on file with the Board Secretary. In addition, a notice regarding this virtual meeting and instructions were published in the Asbury Park Press and City of Asbury Park website. A copy of notice is on file with the Board Secretary. The notices and conduct of this meeting are in accordance with the guidelines of virtual meetings issued by the New Jersey Department of Community Affairs. Please note that all microphones of public users are muted until the public question or comment period. If you would like to speak during this time only, please use the Raise Hand button in Zoom, if on a computer, or dial *9 if on a telephone. Your last, your name or last four digits of your phone number will be called. What is your turn to speak? If at any time your question or during your question, you are deemed to be out of line or topic, we reserve the right to mute your microphone, and we will make an announcement that this has occurred. During the public comment meeting, the public comment section only, the public has three minutes to speak. Please turn off all cell phones and electronic devices during the meeting. Please identify yourself before you speak. And this meeting is being recorded and will be available to view via AP TV. Please join me for the Pledge of Allegiance. Pledge of Allegiance.
Okay, and I will now take real call. Mayor John Moore.
Yeah.
Councilwoman Avon Clayton.
Here.
Michael Manzella.
Here.
Jim Henry.
Here.
Jennifer Souter.
Here.
Trudy Syfex is absent. Alexis Taylor.
Here.
Eric Gallipow.
Here.
Rick Lambert.
Here.
And Barbara Kerzak.
Here.
Thank you, everyone.
The first item on the agenda is the minutes, approval of the minutes of the May 17th, 2021, regular meeting. Anybody have any, any comments? If not, can I get a motion to approve?
Move it, Mike Manzella.
Second, Jim Henry.
And I have a motion by Michael Manzella and a second by Jim Henry. And all members are eligible to vote. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any, any opposed? Thank you. Meeting minutes approved. And we will mark them in two evidences as Exhibit B1 tonight. And they are on the screen now.
All right, just for, as we normally do with meetings that are, that have a higher number of attendees. At this point, I see that we have about 28 additional attendees from the public. We are capable of handling many more than that via these Zoom meetings. So if anybody else wanted to join, they could join. So nothing is restricted as far as their ability to be here. Our, let's proceed to our application with, for the Asbury Partners LLC, 1500 Ocean Avenue.
Before we proceed with that, Jim Henry, I'm recusing myself from the deliberations. I will leave the meeting now and I will not come back this evening.
Thank you, Jim.
Thank you, Jim.
All right, Ms. Phelps.
Thank you. So for the record, my name is Jennifer Philip Smith, and I am here tonight on behalf of Asbury Partners. And this concerns the ongoing for the proposed B block 4502 lot 1.23. This is ongoing since May of 2019. Just for brief background, after many hearings in December of 2020, the applicant completed its presentation and the objectors saw also, also completed its final closing argument. At that point, the board went into deliberations, which it conducted in January. And during those deliberations, a request was made specifically to look at the design of the rear fence on the property. The board then referred the fence and only the fence to its Design Review Committee and asked that the applicant present alternative designs for that fence. The applicant did so. We first presented two options, which were discussed at a public virtual meeting on March 18th, 2021. After receiving feedback from the Design Review Committee, we submitted another option, which was discussed during a public meeting on May 21st of 2021. It is that option that the Design Review Committee reviewed favorably that we are presenting here this evening. We have Gary Handel, who is our witness, who I'll be calling up shortly, who you've all heard from several times before over the course of the application. Before I get to Mr. Handel, though, just administratively, we did provide new public notice for this meeting and our affidavit of mailing and the two affidavits of publication from the Asbury Park Press and the Coaster were both provided to the Board Secretary and Board Attorney in advance of the meeting. In addition, we're going to be presenting one exhibit this evening that we will be marking A77. It's available on the website under the Designer Review Committee package from May 21st, 2021. The link is listed as on the website. That package, which is a PDF, will be listed in its entirety as one exhibit, which is A77. I believe the last exhibit that we entered in December of 2020 was A76. So that seven-page package will be A77. So with that, unless there are any other administrative items that we need to handle, Madam Chairwoman or Mr. Serpico, I would like to ask Mr. Handel to come back as our first.
Okay. Just for the record, I've reviewed the submissions. Although not required, they were submitted and they're in proper form. At this time, we'll swear in both Mr. Handel and I'd like to swear in Jason Fichter in case there's any discussion that takes place by those individuals at this point in time. Mr. Handel.
Yes, sir.
Okay, please raise your right hand. Do you solemnly swear that the testimony about to given this matter be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Please, once again, state your name and spell it for the record. Give us your professional licensure. And I'm sure Jennifer, we, there's no, really no need for us to go through your qualifications. You've already been pre-qualified as the architect of record. Just let us know who you are again.
Yes, for the record, my name is Gary Handel, H-A-N-D-E-L-F-A-I-A. I'm the managing partner of Handel Architects and the architect for the applicant. I am a licensed architect in the state of New Jersey, as well as many other states.
Great. Jason Fichter. One second. I'd like to get Jason sworn in, just in case. I'm sorry.
I'm here, Jack.
Jason, do you solemnly swear a testimony about to given this matter be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Okay, please give us your affiliation with the board.
Jason Fichter, Board Engineer and Board Conflict Planner on this application.
Great. Thank you. Go right ahead, Jennifer. I'm sorry for interrupting.
No, I apologize. Mr. Handel was previously accepted by the board as an expert in the field of architecture, and we continue to offer him in that capacity this evening. Up on the screen, if I could ask Mr. Kearns, who's controlling the screen, to just go to the first page of the package, just so everyone can follow along at home. This is the boardwalk fence study that we have now marked as A77. And we're going to go to the first, there we go, the boardwalk view original scheme. So, Mr. Handel, you've previously testified as to all facets of this application, but tonight we are here only to discuss the fence design. So if you could, if you could please describe the fence as it was previously submitted and reviewed by the planning board as of December of 2020, and then please discuss the new design that went before the Designer Review Committee.
Thank you, Jennifer. So we submitted the boardwalk fence study dated May 11th, 2021, to the Design Review Committee, which was reviewed at their meeting on May 21st, 2021. On this first slide, we have the original scheme, which is the last version of the fence design that was presented to the planning board before January 2021. This prior version of the fence included vertical seven-foot-six-inch-high boards placed in an alternating perpendicular and parallel pattern. There were eight landscape nooks, each measuring seven foot six inches wide, one foot two inches deep, where the fence was set back from the boardwalk to create an area for landscaping. The solid portions between the nooks are approximately 16 and a half feet wide. And here on Slide 2, we have our proposed design, a rendering of that proposed design, which was developed after consultation with the Design Review Committee. So this is the updated fence, which includes horizontally oriented boards, landscaped areas, and spaces which are dedicated for murals. And here you can see a plan of the fence. The boardwalk is to the bottom of the page. And starting along from the left side, you can see that there would be a seven-foot run, and that would be set back six feet, and then it would step out six feet. And then there would be a 40-foot run, and then a recessed portion, which would be recessed one foot two inches, that would run along and be landscaped. And then you can see the landscape indicated there. And then you can see the 32-foot-wide portion that has been allocated for a mural. There would be another recessed landscape portion, again, set back one foot two inches. That would be 24 feet wide. And then another step out with a 24-foot mural there. And then another recessed portion, again, set back one foot two inches. That would be 16 feet wide. And then another flat section of board at 28 feet. And then a setback of six, of six feet at, you know, at, you know, at that point in time. And then we go to the next, the fence remains seven foot six high. The fence would return down the northern edge of the property for approximately 55 feet. And go next. And here we have some fence details that show the three sections of fence. So we can see the murals on the left. And these murals are examples only. The final murals would be selected upon consultation with the city's Public Arts Commission. And then to the right of that, you can see one of the inset portions first, that would be set back one foot two inches. And that would be solid to four feet, approximately four feet high. And then there would be a series of openings that are gradient above that with landscape shielding the solid areas. And then to the right of that, you can see the solid portions of the fence, which have the horizontally organized boards and the whole fence rising to a height of the same seven foot six inches that was part of the original design. And so that is our design for, our proposed design upon consultation with the Designer Review Committee for the fence.
Thank you, Mr. Handel. Those are the only questions I have for Mr. Handel concerning the fence.
Okay, does the, the board have any questions that they would like to ask of Mr. Handel?
Barbara, this is Mike Manzella. I was on the Designer Review Committee, but, and I asked this question there, and I guess I'll just ask it again on the record, so it's part of the application. But was there any objection from the applicant in potentially adding a third mural at the southeast corner of the built, of the fence, the southernmost part of the fence?
I could ask Mr. Kearns, who's controlling the screen, to go back to, there we go, perfect. So you're asking in the area that pops out that does not have mural pointing to it, right where the cursor is?
Yeah, correct, correct.
I, I mean, I could say, I know we were at the Design Review Committee, and there was perhaps a difference of opinion as to how many murals to have.
Yes.
That particular issue, although the applicant thinks that two is the right amount, if that one area, the corner there, the board thinks that a mural is warranted there, the applicant is not opposed to adding a third mural on the fence facing the boardwalk.
Thank you.
Does any, do any of the other board members have anything else that they would like to question?
This is Jen Souter, and I know you, I apologize, I know you just explained this, but I just want to make sure that I'm understanding. On option one, that shows the horizontals and mural. Sorry, if you keep, if you can go, it's the details, like once we get past fence details, the next, yes, thank you. So the, the dimensions of those openings above the vegetation is...
So they, they gradate, so they, so they need to start at approximately four feet above grade from the pool side because of pool regulations require that the, those vertical slats cannot be used as a fence for handhelds, so they need to start at four feet. So they start at, so those holes start at one-half inch and go up to two-and-a-half inches at the top, you know, so that they, so they, they get larger as they get up towards the top of the fence.
Okay, thank you. That was my question, was the dimension at the top, the openings. Thank you.
Anyone else from the board?
Yeah, I'm sorry, John Moore, can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, number one, I appreciate the applicant taking two months off to meet with the committee. I appreciate all the work from the committee. And so anything I say, it's not a reflection that you did, did a bad job. It's all my personal opinion. To me, a fence is a fence, be it vertical or horizontal. Truthfully, going horizontal reminds me of palace. I think Mr. Handel and everybody from the applicant has done a fantastic job of making the west side so attractive. I've seen no increases making the, what you guys call the alleyways north-south, what we call the east side, which during the course of the year, more people are going to see the east side than the west side, because people are going to be walking up and down the boardwalk. People in cars are going to be like driving by and not even noticing. So I'm, again, just my own personal opinion. I wish more could have been done to make this more attractive, both north, south, and east. Thank you.
Anyone else? I also am asking the same question that, that Mike had, I also had, is that it seems as though that, you know, there just seems to be a better balance with three. In my personal opinion, I'm by no means an architect or an artist. But visually, for me, three seems to be better. But like I said, I am no architect or artist. I'm just saying from visually, I find that more appealing. There's, any other board member that would like to, um, they have any questions? No? Yeah? Okay, anything from our professionals?
No questions here, thank you.
None.
Okay, okay, so let's open up to public questions.
I suggest that Mr. Lieberman go first.
Okay, I'm sorry, I didn't see him. Oh, there he is.
Yeah, I think he came in a little later, I believe.
Okay. Okay.
Stuart, you're here, correct?
That's me. No, I'm here.
Okay, okay, I just want to make sure I got you.
Thank you. Hi, Jack, how you doing? Hi, everybody. Hello, board. You know, I'm going to let the public ask the questions about it. I mean, obviously, the board knows where my clients come from in general about this, but we're just talking about the fence right now. I would, the only thing I would do is reiterate Mayor Moore's position and that I really adopt that in its entirety. I think that the point he's making really captures, you know, if we're just focusing on the fence tonight, what my view would, what my client's view would be on that issue. And in terms of two and three, I would only say, I know with plantings, they always say you go with odd numbers, not even numbers, and it's just supposed to be for symmetry. I don't know. I guess symmetry, you would think there would just be two. But somehow, when there's three, that seems to be what you do, and it kind of seems like that's probably the right thing to do here, too. But my heavens, I'm clearly not an architect and I'm not an artist. And if I were, things would be falling apart and they wouldn't look good. But that's just my perception. But I would reiterate with, 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 as much persuasion as Mayor Moore had his sentiment, I think he's right. But other than that, I'm going to just wait for the public to have their comment. Thank you for giving me the opportunity to do that. I appreciate it.
Okay, let's, let's open it up to public questions. And this, as always, is limited to what was just presented within the field today. Irene, take it away.
Yes, I am showing two hands raised. So just to remind everyone, if you would like to ask a question, you can click on the Raise Hand button on your screen or dial *9 from your telephone. And Mr. Mike Goonan, go ahead and ask your question.
Can I have your address, please? As well as spelling of your name, please.
Can you guys hear me?
Yes.
Yes.
Yep, my name is Mike Goonan, G-O-O-N-A-N. I live at 1101 Ocean Avenue.
Thank you.
I'm just gonna, my, my one question is, when I look at the actual plan with the measurements of where all the recesses are, my question is, is I see on the, the south end, the span of fence and then that first recess are both 40 feet. And I guess my question is, is why is the span of fence, or could the span of fence be longer there to allow another mural between those two light posts?
Yeah, as, as Jen Smith mentioned, we could study the addition of another mural in working with the Designer Review Committee. You know, there was discussion about whether there should be two or three. Two is ultimately chosen, and the, the goal was to have the murals basically not be interrupted by the light posts, you know, so that the, you know, and to have an alternating pattern of the recesses, the flat sections and the murals, you know. So, so, so it, it, it probably is possible to, you know, to add a, a, another mural, but the goal had been to not have the murals blocked by the light posts, because the idea had been that that might be a place where people might take Instagram photos or selfies, you know, and that the light poles would be a distraction, as well as obfuscate the art.
Yeah, I guess my question is, is if, if a third mural was added between those light posts, the, the span of fence on the southern end would have to be longer? Would that, is there any, is there any requirement that a span of fence can only be a certain length without being recessed that, you know, we would run into trouble with?
So Mike, the answer, the answer to your question is no, there is no legal requirement for the, for the lengths.
Great, thank you. That's it for me.
Yes, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Goonan. Next person I will call upon is Janet Dolan. Please go ahead and state your name and address and ask your question.
Hi, Janet Dolan, Janet, last name D-O-L-A-N, 1501 Ocean. My question, it's a minor point, but it just strikes me as though the 1.2, the one-foot-two-inch recess doesn't seem deep enough to accommodate the plantings that are shown there. It seems like they would require more than, than a little over a foot. They, they seem like they're very big bushy-type grass plantings and would not be accommodated with a, with a 1.0, a one-foot-two-inch recess. Is there any way to make that recess a little bit deeper? I would think it would need close to a foot and a half to two feet, but that's my question.
Thank you.
The, the design has been, you know, done with our landscape architect, and so they, they believe it's adequate.
And the landscape architect did previously testify. And Mr. Handel, just to clarify, the depth of the inset is the same depth this was previously, correct?
That is correct.
Testified to by the landscape architect.
Ms. Dolan, did you have another question?
No, it, it, no, I don't have another question. I, I still, I look at those plants and I, I really, they'll, they'll end up coming out onto the boardwalk.
You're testifying. You can make that comment during public comment.
Yeah, no, they answered the question. I just don't agree with the answer, but that's fine.
Okay, thank you very much, Ms. Dolan. And the next person I will call upon is Pam Lamberton. Please go ahead and spell your name, your address, and ask your question.
Hi, everybody. My name is Pam Lamberton. I live at Sunset Avenue in Asbury Park. And I highly respect Ms. Smith, but I remember differently the instructions that were given to the, the DRC. More along the lines of what Mayor Moore remembers, the discussion about the murals was not on the fence. It was on the side walls of the north and south of the structure. Is there any way that they can be reconsidered at this point? I don't care about the murals on the fence. In fact, if, I liked the first iteration, which was just, just the plantings. But, but I do remember that most of the discussion about the murals was regarding the side walls of those buildings. And after you respond to that, I was wondering if there was any significance to the fact that you're, this is now being referred to as a beach club pavilion? That's all.
It was actually on the beach club pavilion. I know that's not part of the testimony this evening, but that was actually something used throughout the application. As for the murals on the side, my recollection was that it was referred to the Designer Review Committee solely for the fence, and that's what we presented to the DRC, and that's what Mr. Handel has testified to this evening.
I think the direct question, if I understood it correctly, was whether or not there would be any further consideration of murals on the east, excuse me, north and south walls?
Yes.
So we get an answer to that?
I think at this time, what we have presented is the fence, you know, and that's what Mr. Handel has testified to. So as far as questions to Mr. Handel or about what he's presented, we'll certainly listen to what, what the board, what the public has to say and what the board has to say. But the testimony this evening that Mr. Handel is being questioned on is about the fence, and the presentation to the DRC did not change any of the, the building changes.
That's your answer, that's fine. Any other questions, Pam?
No, no, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Lamberton. And next caller, or I'm sorry, next hand raised is phone number ending in 124. Please state your name, address, and... Please state your name, address, and ask your question. Hello? We can hear you.
Hi, Rita Moreno, Eighth Avenue, Asbury Park. I sort of agree with the mayor. I, I don't want to say exactly what he said, and I know this is no time to comment, but an ugly building is an ugly building, and one of the planners said that, and anything you do to it is not going to make it look better.
You're testifying.
That's my, that's my opinion.
Please, Rita, please ask questions, not testify.
Okay, well, that's my question. I, I agree with John, and I think that's, I don't think the fence, I don't know about the fence. First of all, an artist, an artist's rendering doesn't tell you.
You're testifying. You're testifying. You're not asking a question.
Okay, why do we have to have a fence? I missed some of the meetings, so I don't know. This has been going on for two years.
We can't, we can't go back about why the fence is there. We can only talk about what they presented this evening.
Okay, so then I'll wait for later, okay?
Yeah, yeah.
All right, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Moreno. And next person I will call upon is Kenneth Berger. Go ahead and speak.
Hi, this is Kenneth Berger, 1501 Ocean Avenue. My question is, will the murals be painted on the same horizontal wood planks that make up the rest of the fence?
That is still under consideration.
What is longevity of a mural painted on wood right next to the ocean?
The substrate for the murals is still under consideration.
Okay. And what's the longevity of these murals painted either on wood or some other material? Especially with the problems with sand blowing against the surface of them over time. Will they start peeling and wearing, and who will repaint them?
We will be working on the plans for the murals with the city's Public Art Commission.
Okay, hopefully they'll take that into consideration, because on the pavilion next to it, those murals look terrible now, because they've worn off and peeled and faded and just look very damaged.
Thank you, Mr. Berger. Did you have another question?
No, no, thank you.
Thank you very much. Okay, next person is Ralph Michelli. I hope I'm pronouncing your name correctly. Excuse me if I'm not. Go ahead.
Mitchley, yes. You hear me?
Yes, we can hear you.
Ralph Mitchley, 1501 Ocean Avenue, MIT S C H G L E.
Go ahead, Mr. Michelli.
Okay. Really, my question just boils down to this. Hearing the last planning board meeting, I thought that the fence was coming down. The fort-type fence is still there. Is the only change that you've changed the slats from the vertical to this horizontal? Other than the indentations being moved a little bit and the addition of mural, the only change that you've made is, is it correct that the only change has been that you've made horizontal slats on the fort wall?
The changes are the ones that I presented tonight, and done in consultation with the Design Review Commission, Design Review Committee.
Okay, so that, that is a yes, that they're only on a horizontal?
No, that's his answer.
I gave, I gave testimony, the full testimony was.
Doesn't look like any change. I agree with the mayor. That's my, at the end of my question.
Okay.
That was it.
Thank, thank you, Mr. Michelli. All right, and next person is Ellen Michelson. Go ahead.
Yes, Ellen Michelson, 1501 Ocean Avenue. I, my question is this, I have attended virtually every single one of the open planning board meetings regarding this, and I guess I have a similar question as one of our previous speakers, which is, I, I also remember that the discussion was about murals on the north and south side, and I'm just wondering at what point, since, I think the last meeting was December, open board meeting that I remember, was that changed or dis, you know, disregard?
This, this witness can't answer that question.
Well, this is a design, I, I mean, the design.
The witness is the architect who testified to his amendments. You can ask him about that. If you have a question regarding procedure, if it's going to be recognized, should be addressed to the board, not to the witness.
All right, I'll address it to the board then.
If it's recognized.
Okay. Can it be recognized? Seriously?
I believe, Jack, I'm not quite sure how we proceed with this. There have been.
It should, it's, it's better said during the public comment, and then the board can respond after the public comments regarding what the board intended for the Design Review Committee to look at.
That's fine.
Ridiculous.
We can do that during the, the comments portion.
Sure, bring it out during the comments.
Thank you.
And then the board can respond to it.
Did you have any other question, Ms. Michelson?
Apparently none that are going to be answered.
Thank you. Okay, next person with their hand raised is Madeline Monaco. Please go ahead.
Hi, this is Madeline. I live at 1501 Ocean Avenue. I'm sorry, I joined a little bit late today, but my question is more along the lines of John Moore's comment. Were there any other iterations considered that were not a fence, something that's more interactive? Windows, for example? Was there anything else considered other than these, these designs that you've presented today?
The design, I'll answer that on a procedural basis. The design presented today was what was presented to the Designer View Committee on the 21st. There was a meeting by the Designer View Committee on the 18th, at which alternate designs for the fence had previously been submitted. Both of those submissions are available on the website. Those were the only two submissions that were made to the Designer View Committee, and both involved solely the fence.
So, so there were no other interactive type of facade present? You didn't think of any others that could be more interactive than a fence and murals?
If you're asking what was presented to the Designer View Committee.
No, I'm not asking what was presented. I'm asking what you considered.
The only, Mr. Handel can't go through every consideration, but what was presented to the Designer View Committee is what the board, we believe, had asked us to do, which was take a look at the fence, and the fence was presented. So if you're asking what's been presented and considered, it was on May, March 18th. It's available on the website, and May 21st also available on the website. Those are the links.
I'm sorry, that does not answer my question, but.
Question can only be asked of the architect of the testimony that he gave this evening. He's subject to cross-examination at this point. That's, that's what the questions are directed at.
Okay, thank you, Jack. I don't have any other questions at this time.
Thank you, Ms. Monaco. And next person I will call upon is city historian. Please state your name, your address, and go ahead and ask your questions.
All right, I clicked the unmute button. Hello?
Yes, we can hear you. Thank you, Warner.
Yeah, Warner Baumgartner, 402 Fifth Avenue, city historian. How are you? Mr. Handel, oh, you were president, present at the other hearings, were you not, at all of them, or did you skip some of them?
Which hearings are you referring to?
About this application. Were you at every hearing?
I have been at the, at the public testimonies for, at the planning board hearings for all of them.
Okay, great. So the primary objection for the east facade has been the fence, correct?
I have to, Jack, are we going to have questions?
Warner, cut to the chase. Ask him, ask the questions about what he testified this evening, please. That is, that's the scope of this cross-examination, about what the witness testified about this evening.
How do you believe that this fence is any better than the other fence? Please give a rationale for that.
We were asked to meet with the Design Review Committee to present alternatives. We did. We believed we satisfied the, the questions that had been asked of us and the criteria set by the Design Review Committee.
And what criteria was that?
There was.
You, it's appropriate to ask, summarize two entire public meetings of comments from the Designer Review Committee, but this is what was presented to the Designer Review Committee and what is now before you today.
It was just testimony that criteria was mentioned. I'd like to know what that criteria is that was just testified to.
The incorporation, the incorporation of, of the murals and the incorporation of the recessed areas with the, with the open slats, the changing of the, of the, of the, of the fence from a vertical to a horizontal pattern that would allow for those openings.
That's the criteria that you were presented with from the design committee, is your testimony?
That is our proposed design that we believe answers what we were asked to do.
And again, I'm asking you, what were you asked to do?
We're going in circles, Mr. Handel. I have to, Jack, just answer to what, what we believed the design.
That's his answer. It may not be acceptable, and you may be able to criticize it during public comment, but that's his answer.
Thank you very much. I appreciate the, the hard work. What type of vegetation is going to be planted in those recessed vegetation areas? Are they arborvitas or are they seagrass?
So the type of vegetation was previously testified to by our landscape architect, who is the one who chose the vegetation. It's the same. It was, was previously testified to. That's not Mr. Handel's area of expertise.
Okay. So he has no idea whether one foot, two inches is sufficient?
You've already put on the record that the, the depth of the insets has not changed, and that the landscape architect already testified to the plantings that would be planted in those insets.
I see. Okay, thank you. Was any consideration given to putting any storefronts here for service to the public?
The, we were asked to look at the fence. Mr. Handel has testified as to the fence. That's what is before you.
Okay. I'm gonna, I'm gonna call this circular reasoning, and I'm gonna sign off. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Baumgartner. And I show one more hand raised. It's Ernest Magnoli. Please go ahead and state your name, address, and ask your question.
Yeah, Ernest Magnoli, M-I-G-N-O-L-I, 7th and Northeast 7th Street, Pointe Beach, Florida. So my question is for the.
Magnoli, I'm sorry, before you start, I know that went through this tonight, and he gets this application. I have to put it on the record again. For one minute.
I can't hear you.
Yeah, Jennifer, you're breaking.
I'm sorry, Mr. Magnoli, I had to mute you. We have feedback coming back from you, which is interfering with Ms. Smith speaking. So please, if you have another device, more than one device connected, please mute one of them or disconnect one.
And while Mr. Magnoli is doing that, I know I put this on the record at our last meeting. Being streaming only does not live in your own property in Asbury Park. I do need to just put on the record that for a person interested in the party, they have to be able to use, enjoy, or own property within Asbury Park, and that's under Section 10 of Municipal Land Use Law and Section 4. And so we do, we would object to someone who does not live in town to being an interested party. That said, I understand the last application, Mr. Circo, that you overruled that objection. I suspect you will do the same here, but I did need to put that on the record.
Yeah, I overruled it on the same basis, under the liberal interpretation and the fact that Mr. Magnoli has represented that he is earnestly looking to get some property interest within the city of Asbury Park, and that the same stringent guidelines that I laid out the other day, which I won't go through again at the meeting last Thursday night, are still in effect.
Thank you.
Okay, Mr. Magnoli, go ahead and speak.
Do you want me to identify myself again?
No need.
Okay. So for the architect, did, did you say that when it comes time for the murals, that the city arts committee will be involved in choosing the murals? I think like on the ocean club, those murals were decided by the arts committee. I was at the meeting. Is that what'll be used for this?
Let him answer.
Okay, okay.
Yeah, so we'll, I believe we will be going, we'll be doing this in consultation with the city's Public Art Commission.
Okay. And, and in fact, okay. So what was the purpose for changing vertical to horizontal on the fence? I, I think you said so there'd be recesses, or is that the reason?
If we, the idea was to allow for some openings, you know, at the top of the fence, which wouldn't be contradicted by the, the pool code there, so that, that's, that set up the recesses as having the horizontal, the horizontal fence, and there, so that was, that was one of the reasons.
Is the horizontal fence as tall as the vertical fence?
It's exactly the same height.
Which is?
Seven feet, six inches.
Okay. Well, whether it's, when it's, when it's horizontal, horizontal, will that allow people to like look in or no? Either one won't?
No, yeah, let him answer your first question.
Okay, okay, okay.
You'll see some, there will be some, some, there'll be some slots where you will be able to see through those slots, gradient from a very narrow dimension at around four feet to a bigger dimension at the top, at the top.
So you'll be able to look in and see the pool?
You won't see the, I don't believe you will see the pool, because the pool is down and not up.
So what will you see, the lockers?
You'll see sky.
So if you're standing on the boardwalk on the east side, looking at the horizontal six-foot fence, the recesses.
Not six. I think you said that it was something change.
Oh, I'm, I'm sorry. So anyone four feet and below can't look in, but anyone above four feet in height can look in and you're gonna see skylight? I thought that's what you said, when you look in, you'll see skylight?
You'll see sky.
Sky. Okay. Can, can I ask if I was standing there, how I'm gonna see sky? And what sky am I gonna see?
No, 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 that, that, no.
No.
That, that's improper. That's, that's pure speculation. Ask a more direct question, please.
We tried to, we've tried to render, if you see the, the spaces between the boards, those show, those show the gaps that you, that you would have vision through.
Okay, okay. Do you mean when you look through, you'd be able to see in the inside, which is under the sky? I think that, is that maybe what you mean?
Not so, I think this is starting far.
All right. I, I was just trying to figure out, like, you know, I, I think if you're standing on the east side and there's murals there and the horizontal fence, and it's seven feet, you're standing in front of it, I think the testimony is when you look in, you'll see sky, and I'm just wondering if what that means is coming down onto the inside of the building, that's what you'll see? Because, I mean, it is an enclosed area. It's not like it's the walls and the fences and the front. the walls and the fences and the front and the fence in the, in the back. It's, it's enclosing it. But what you're saying on the east side, the way you've designed it, there'll be little areas where you can look, look in.
Wouldn't that be, yes, wouldn't that be a simple yes, that when you look in, you'll see, you'll see inside?
You, you mean for me? No.
No, for Mr. Handel.
Yeah, that's.
If you look through the fence, you'll see inside.
Yes, you will. Those small gaps will allow you to see inside and the, and the ones that are higher up. You know, as unless your eye level is at seven foot, six inches, you'll be looking through and seeing the sky.
I get it.
Okay, okay. Thank you. No, that's a great answer. So, so now the question is of the whole east wall from the, from the length, the height going up seven feet, is it gonna be as wide as the building itself? From north to south?
Yes.
Yes? Okay. So how many square feet of mural are you planning? And are there multiple murals? And then my question is gonna be, all right, let him answer that. Okay, go ahead.
So, Mr. Handel, I, I know we have two areas so far identified, the murals. There's the 24 foot section and the 32 foot section.
Each of those are seven foot, six inches high.
So the one mural, 22 feet wide by seven and a half feet tall, and the other would be 24 feet wide by seven and a half feet tall. Am I, is that correct?
Yes.
Okay. All right. Thank you. So, so they're pretty big murals. So, so now the question is, if I'm standing on the boardwalk and I'm, and I'm, so to speak, looking in, for most of the time, I'll be looking through the mural, right?
No.
Do you mean this wall where the, where there's nowhere to look in?
We're going down a primrose path. How can, how can you answer what he's going to be looking in at if you don't know where he's standing on the boardwalk? The, let me, let me, the question is extremely broad and does, is not, does not have a definable answer.
Okay, are the murals covering most of the wall? Are the murals covering most of the wall?
No, I think he just told you this, the, the, the square footage, the height and the length.
Seven foot and I think it was over 80 feet.
And can I ask a question? Mr. Magnoli, if I could just ask a question, Mr. Handel, that I think is what you're going for. Mr. Handel, there are three sections that are inset. Is that correct?
Correct.
And one is 40 feet long by seven and a half feet high. One is 24 feet long by seven and a half foot high. And one is 16 foot long by seven and a half feet high. Is that correct?
That is correct.
And in each one of those sections, there are the horizontal openings that you just described. Is that correct?
That is correct.
Okay. So, so the mural is not on every part of the wall?
The mural's on the part of the wall marked mural.
Okay. Mark mural. Okay, I get it. And I think, Ms. Smith, I think you're saying, I said six, somebody said seven, and now you just said seven and a half. So we're back to seven, correct? It's seven.
No, no.
That's what he testified to.
The height of the, of the fence is seven feet, six inches, as it was originally, as it is proposed now.
Oh, it is seven foot six. It's not what I said six, and it's not what I thought I heard seven. It's seven point six feet five.
His initial answer to your question was seven foot six, 10 minutes ago.
Okay. All right. Uh, I think that's, uh, so, so, uh, the other thing is, does, does the way this is designed on the east side, what does it allow the public to interact with? I think somebody mentioned like.
Can't answer that question. That's beyond the scope of his cross, of his direct examination.
All right. I think I've run out of the ability to ask questions or to be able to ask questions. So I'm finished. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Magnoli. At this time, I do not show any other hands raised.
Okay. Any other witnesses?
No, no, no other witnesses. And, you know, we previously both, Mr. Leiberman and I, we are closing arguments on the record. And so I don't wish to reiterate everything we've already put before the board, other than to say, the board asked us to take a look at the fence. We've worked with your design review committee to do so. And this was the fence that the design review committee reviewed and favorably looked upon. So we, we thank the board for the opportunity to take a second look at the fence and hope that we've answered your questions in that respect.
All right, thank you. Um, at this point, as actually, that was a really a very good lead in because we have already heard public comment in our previous meetings. Our, we have also as a planning board deliberated in front of the public back in January. So at this point, we can open it up to the public for comment about what was discussed, what was testified to today. Uh, we can open it up for that.
Okay, just to remind everyone again, please click on the raise hand button at the bottom of your screen or dial star nine to raise your hand if you would like to make a comment. You will have three minutes on the clock to make your comment. Mr. Serpico will swear you in. When we call your name, please state your name, spell it, and state your address.
Uh, just, just one second. Mr. Serpico?
Yes.
At what point would we state whether the board is open to have discussion about the north and the south side? At what point would we state that? Or do we take a poll? Or how does that work?
I would suggest that after the public comment, the board can discuss and possibly answer the question that was raised by Pam Reil Lambert and a couple of other people regarding what the scope of the direction was from the board itself. I recollect certain comments by certain members, but not necessarily that was the direction of the board for the, for the DRC. So I would think that we should hear the comments, certainly address those questions to the best of our ability. And then the board, if the board has recommendations that they would like to make applicant before voting, they can do that.
Okay, so let's open it up to the public comment about what was presented today. Because the board has already heard the public comment and has already taken that into account to deliberation discussion that we had. So let's move forward and open up public comment.
Okay.
Okay, thank you. Miss Karzak, the the only hand raised that I see is Mr. Goonan. Please go ahead and state your name and your address, and then Mr. Serpico will swear you in, and then I will start the clock.
Just one thing in that bit, I'm, I'll motion to open public comment.
Oh, I'm sorry. Yes.
That's okay.
Second, Mike Manzella.
Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? All right, public comment open.
Mr. Goonan, are you on a computer where I can see you or, or you're just on telephonically?
Uh, I'm on my phone, but I should be able to let you see me.
Okay.
Um, I'm not sure how to do that though.
Well, if you can't, that's okay. I'm gonna ask you to raise your right hand and tell me that you've done so.
Done.
Okay. Do you solemnly swear that the testimony about to given this matter will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Okay. And once again, please state your name for the record and spell it and your address, cause it's a different phase.
Yep, Michael Goonan, G O O N A N. And my address is 1101 Ocean Avenue.
Great, thank you.
Yep. I just wanted to say, when we did public comment the first time around, I was not thrilled with the fence. But I understand that the, the site plan as proposed kind of requires a barrier fence to be there. And I actually think the new fence design as proposed is a, is a big improvement. I think the, the architect and the design review committee did a great job. I want to just agree with what the chairwoman and Mr. Manzella said. I personally think three murals would be more aesthetically pleasing, especially if they were kind of symmetrically spaced between the lamp posts. And I also still would like to hear some commentary about what is gonna happen on the north and south sides. But overall, I just wanna throw out my support for the new fence design. That's it from me. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Goonan. All right. And next person is Ms. Lambert. Go ahead.
Pam, are you there?
Unmute. Hi.
Hi Pam. Please raise your right hand and tell me you've done so.
Um, I've done so.
Thank you. You solemnly swear a testimony about to given this matter will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Please spell your last name and give me your address on Sunset Avenue, please.
L A M B E R T O N, 321 Sunset Avenue, apartment 4A.
Thank you.
Um, I'm just wondering about, Jack, if you would correct me if I'm wrong about this, but the DRC met with the applicant and they came to a conclusion about what they thought was best. But at this point, the planning board is not bound by the DRC's decision. Is that correct?
That is correct.
So.
Makes recommendations, that's all. The board is the one that acts formally on whatever is before it.
Okay. Actually, that's all I wanted to say. Thank you.
Okay.
Thank you, Ms. Lambert.
Thanks, Irina.
All right. And next we have Ms. Monaco. Go ahead and, and state your name.
One second, Madeline. I'll be right with you.
Sure.
Okay. Please raise your right hand and tell me that you've done so.
I have my right hand raised.
Thank you. Do you solemnly swear that the testimony about to given this matter will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Okay. And it's M O N A C O, correct?
Correct.
Okay. And your address again, please.
1501 Ocean Avenue in Asbury.
Thank you. Your floor is yours.
Okay. So I just wanted to reiterate my question as a comment. The facade that is facing the north, south, and east still is not very attractive. I, murals are beautiful. However, everything else that we see on the boardwalk, other than the pavilions that are currently not in operation, everything else is much more interactive. You want to go to the pinball museum, you can see in to the pinball museum. You want to go to a restaurant or you don't want to go, you could still see. It's a very interactive, inviting, enjoyable environment. No matter how you change this fence, it still looks like a fortress. No matter how you try to put something, a piece of art on it, it still is a fortress. So I'm very disappointed in the design and I would have preferred to have seen some more ingenuity and innovation in trying to meet the goal that stated in the waterfront redevelopment plan, the caper permit of making whatever goes on that piece of property inviting, welcoming to the public more interactive. So I'm, I just want to state for the record that it's still very disappointing and still looks like a fortress. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Monaco. And next hand raised is Mr. Mitchelson. I'm sorry, Mr. Mitchelli.
Yes, Ralph Mitchely, MIT S C H E L E, 1501 Ocean Avenue.
One second. S C H E L E, 1501 Ocean, you said?
Correct.
Okay. Please raise your right hand and tell me you've done so.
It is.
Thank you. Do you solemnly swear that the testimony about to given this matter will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Thank you. Proceed.
Uh, basically, I want to echo Madeline's comments and the mayor's and add to it that it is nothing different. I, after six months of waiting and the comments that I heard in the, in the January meeting, that we were going to be looking at a much more interactive front on the east side. And that the only thing that has occurred here is that they've changed slats from the vertical to the horizontal with a little spacing. That's all they've changed. And the addition of a couple of murals, which frankly, I don't think belong on that side. North and south side, yes. But I think they do not belong for other reasons that have already been stated, such as the sand blast that that's gonna get. It's gonna have to be painted annually. Who's gonna take care of that? But this is a fork. This is four walls with, with no ceiling, no roof, sound light, everything coming through it. And this picket fence on a horizontal is, is a very disappointing change. It's not interactive. And I know I heard some planning board members say, let's make this more interactive. This is no change. Six months later. That's my comment.
Thank you. And next hand raised is Mr. Michael Kushner.
Hi, hello. Michael Kushner, 1105th Avenue, Asbury Park. Um, and I, this is gonna sound a bit like an echo chamber, but timeout, you have to be sworn in. Okay, swear me in, Mr. Serpico. Okay, please raise your right hand. It is raised. Thank you. Do you solemnly swear that the testimony about to given this matter will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth? I do. Proceed. Thank you. Again, just to echo Madeline, the previous caller. You know, I, I just find this fence hideous, horizontal, vertical, it just is exclusion, entitlement. Like the previous caller said, you're putting a fence in front of a bunker. With all due respect to the esteemed architect, this is the best you could do after all this time. It is the ugliest building I've ever seen. And I just think that furthermore, to spend an entire, over an hour now of our time as taxpayers on a call that's just talking about a fence, um, when the overall project has so much more that we need to discuss about it, is just really an insult. So it's lipstick on a pig. You put candy canes there. It's a hideous, hideous design. Thank you. That's all I have to say.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Kushner. And next member of the public is, so it's not a name, asset management conference room. So please state your name.
Hi, sorry about that. I'm still on my work thing and it doesn't let you change your name. This is Kathleen Mumma.
Could you please spell your name, please?
K A T H L E N U M M A.
Exclusion and entitlement. I'm sorry, Mr. Kushner, somebody is.
Oh, I'm sorry. My fault.
And I couldn't get Kathleen's spell and she broke up of her last name.
M U M M A.
Thank you. Your address, please.
1104 Sunset.
Thank you. Please raise your right hand.
It's raised.
You solemnly swear that the testimony about to given this matter will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the.
I do.
Thank you. Proceed.
Uh, I just want to say that I echo what Madeline Monaco's comments were. She said it, said it better, you know, better than I could say it. So that's all.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right. And next is Mr. Baumgartner. Go ahead and state your name and address and Jack will swear you in.
Hello, folks. Warner Baumgartner, 402 Fifth Avenue.
Thank you, Warner. Please raise your right hand.
Go ahead.
You solemnly swear a testimony about to given this matter will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
Yes, I do.
Thank you. Proceed.
Uh, as you folks all know, I am the city historian. I've represented the city in preservation matters and in developing this redevelopment plan from the very beginning. I had the privilege of working with Andres Duany and his esteemed design team when this plan was put together. And we took great pains to make sure that architectural excellence was one of the mainstays, hence all of the different chapters and paragraphs about architecture in the plan. One of the primary fundamental things is that building faces, facades, as you know, of the mass that face the public have a certain characteristic of being attractive and interactive with the public. A blank wall does not qualify. A fence does not qualify. You can read this in the plan. You can use common sense. I, I'm flabbergasted that an entire planning board, an entire design review committee, a world esteemed architect entire planning board, an entire design review committee, a world esteemed architect, does not understand these basic principles that are embedded right in the plan. This has been such a disappointment to me and all the work that was put into creating a set of standards that would create excellent buildings that interact with people, especially on the boardwalk. Anybody who denies that the north side of this building does not face a public space needs to have their head examined. Anybody that denies that the south side of this building does not face a public space, again, needs to have their head examined. And anybody that thinks that an entire 200-foot-plus expanse of fencing on a public boardwalk meets the appropriate standards that were adopted, also needs to have their head examined. I, I'm just beyond words at this point. After all these hearings and all the work that has been put in over the years to create a development plan that if it's followed, would create excellent buildings, and to ignore it at this point is a travesty. I'm, I'm just shocked. So, there you go. Thank you very much.
All right, Warner.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Baumgartner. Yes, I got it.
Mics are off, please. Thank you.
All right, um, may show Mr. McNolly. Go ahead.
Ernest, are you there?
Uh, yes, Ernest McNolly, M I G N O L I, 710 Northeast, 7th Street, Pointe and East, Florida. I'm raising my right hand.
Hold on one second.
M I G N O L I.
I got it, I got it. Thank you. Do you solemnly swear that the testimony about to given this matter be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Thank you. Proceed.
So, I've, I've been, uh, I've lived, uh, in, in that area when North Beach was built, and when the whole area was kind of built, Ocean Club was built, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera, and right in the neighborhood. And, and I remember when this full application started, and, and I want to revert back to the, I, I believe it was the, the saw planner that was brought in, a Mr., I mean, I'm not sure if his name was Sanchez, or, but, uh, uh, he came in with Mr. Lieberman, and, and he gave some exhaustive testimony that, that everybody I know thought was magnificent. I mean, he called it, I don't, I don't want to use, but he called it grotesque, from outer space, you know, a bunker, uh, uh, non-interactive. He also talked about whether it even qualifies for what it's supposed to be, but, but his main emphasis was on...
Mr. McNolly.
What?
Don't tell us about... Excuse me. Mute him if you have to. Don't tell us what a planner said. The board knows what a planner said. We want to know what you have to say.
So I agree. I think it's grotesque, beyond grotesque. Uh, I also think it's discriminatory. I think it's exclusionary. I think it's, uh, unaffordable for 15,000 people, myself included, and Asbury Park. Uh, I, I, I don't get it. I, I just think that it's, it's grotesque. It's grotesque, and I also think the Ocean Club is grotesque, so... That's all I have to say. Hello?
Okay, you're done. Thank you.
Sorry, I was muted. Uh, I do not, oh, I'm sorry. One more hand raised. Ms. Moreno, please go ahead.
Rita, are you there?
Yes.
Okay. Please state your name and your address, please.
Okay, uh, Rita Moreno, M A R A N O, 504 Eighth Avenue, Asbury Park.
Well, please raise your right hand and tell me you've done so.
I got it up.
Thank you. Do you solemnly swear that the testimony about to given this matter be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
Yes.
Thank you. Please proceed.
Okay. I'm not too good at dimensions, but the, the fence, I think it's, even in the code book, that it's going to be too high. It's illegal, uh, facing the boardwalk. I mean, I consider that a street, if you're going to look at the code. And I too, I, I totally agree with Madeline, the, uh, the mayor, everybody. And I think we, the people, should have something to say tonight. Evidently, the artist's rendering doesn't answer all the questions. I'm always for the models, because you really can't see anything on that artist's rendering but a beautiful building, and it's not. Look at the other artist's renderings and tell me if the buildings look like that. Other than that, I, I just think that fence, I don't know how tall it's going to be, but I, I think that's illegal to have on the boardwalk. And especially horizontally, even vertically, is, I don't know which is worse, but I agree with, uh, most of the people, I think, tonight. And I think the board has a lot to think about, because this is, belongs to we, the people, not just a, a certain few. And I think that's the way you should go. We don't usually get a, a real answer from the board, because I don't think they get all the information, even though they think they do. And especially with the artist's rendering, I'm very hard on that, because I remember the models on the boardwalk, and we could see what the whole boardwalk was going to look like, and we could see what all, the whole town was going to look like. And it doesn't look anything like those models we saw. So I think they should go back to the models, and it'll be a lot easier on that board. I know they're volunteers, and I thank them for all their hard work. And that's all I have to say.
Thank you, Ms. Moreno.
You're welcome.
Okay, I do show a few more hands raised. Ms. Catherine Healy, please go ahead and speak.
Hello, Catherine Healy, H E A L E Y, 305 Eighth Avenue.
Please raise your right hand.
It's raised.
Thank you. Do you solemnly swear that the testimony about to given this matter be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do. Um, thank you. I don't want to stretch tonight out, or these years out any longer, um, but I'm just calling in to echo my support behind Mr. Kushner's statements, um, Ms. Monaco's statements, and Mr. Baumgartner. Um, I just, it's just really shocking. And I, there was somebody else at the beginning, too, that said it's been six months, um, since our last meeting, and really doesn't seem like much has been changed or listened to. So, thank you. I appreciate it. That's all.
Thank you, Ms. Healy. And just one moment, please. All right, Polly Schle, Polly Schlech, sorry, sorry. Go ahead.
Come here. Hi, I know that's a hard one. It's, all the consonants are hard. Schilde. Hi, uh, my hand is raised. 1105th Avenue.
Oh, great, okay. Okay, do you solemnly swear that the testimony you're about to given this matter be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
Yes, I do.
Thank you. Proceed.
Hi, I, I just want to echo, thank you, Rita, Warner, Kathleen. Um, all of us are, we're all obviously on the same page about the, um, visuals about this design and the implications in terms of equity and the impact on the community. Um, sticking with the visuals, that's what we're talking about tonight. I feel very sad, because I, I love the, um, the visual, the art that's, that's occurring everywhere at Asbury Park all the time, that's in, engaging and intended to, um, to enhance whatever surfaces the art is on or in. In this case, it seems as though the art is being used to conceal something, to hide it, or to give the public kind of like a, here, we'll give you something to look at, so you can be okay with the fact that you can't get into this exclusive bunker. Um, I just think it's insulting and sad that, that sticking murals on a surface that is, you know, it's not interactive in any way. We've all, we've all said that tonight. Um, that, that aspect of it, the art, using art to do that, to conceal, hide, or, um, convey something that you're supposed to be okay with, just sticking, um, a, a, a beautiful surface on something for the public to look at and, and yet, and be satisfied with the fact that this is a place you can't get into. Um, I guess that's kind of all I want to say, but thank you all. You know, everybody here is working really hard. I know the planning board is working really hard. And, um, I hope that we continue working on it. I don't think this should be finished at this point. Thank you very much, all of you.
Thank you. And I do show a couple more hands raised. Ellen Michelson.
Yes, hi. Ellen Michelson, M I C H E L S O N, 1501 Ocean Avenue, Asbury Park.
Raise your right hand.
Raised.
Thank you. Do you solemnly swear that the testimony about to given this matter be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Please proceed.
Uh, there's been a lot of discussion throughout this whole process, and I think it's, it should be obvious to the planning board that on so very many levels, um, that this project has no support from the public. From the public, uh, the citizens of Asbury Park, throughout all of the different meetings that I've attended throughout these past two years, I have barely heard a single person who is supportive of it. The design is wrong, the location is wrong, the height is wrong, the whole structure, the whole, um, the, the fact that it's private is wrong, that it's cordoned off from everything is wrong. It, it's just, it's the wrong project at the wrong time in the wrong place for all of us who love this city. And I, I know that we're just, we're, we're the David up against the Goliath, but I truly hope that our, that you will listen to our voices. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Michelson. All right, and Catherine Murphy, go ahead.
She's a saw.
Irina, we've got, I keep hearing people making comments, aside from the witnesses.
It was just the last person.
Thank you. And this is, uh, Catherine who? I'm sorry?
Catherine Murphy.
Okay, I don't see her on my screen. Is it a computer or a call-in?
Um, I can't tell. It's most likely a computer, but they are not speaking. Go ahead, Ms. Murphy. Do you, are you there? Catherine Murphy.
Okay.
Hold on, hold on. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you now. Thank you.
Good evening, Catherine Murphy, 510 Deal Lake Drives, Asbury Park.
Okay. Please raise your right hand.
Raised.
Thank you. Do you solemnly swear that the testimony about to given this matter be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Thank you. Proceed.
Yes, um, I would like to thank Madeline, Pam, Kathleen, Warner, Michael, Rita, Polly, Kate Healy, Ellen. Um, I'd like to thank the board and everyone for their hard work, but I concur with, um, everyone's statements that this is a disappointment. After the years of hard work on, on all sides, to come up with a solution that's palatable for the entire community, this is a disappointment. And, um, I just wanted to put that on the record. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Murphy. I do not show any other hands raised at this time.
Thank you.
Motion to close public comment?
Move it. Mike Manzella.
Second, Avon Clayton.
Irina, please make this a voice vote.
Sure, thank you. I have a motion by Michael Manzella and a second by Avon Clayton, Mayor John Moore. How do you vote?
Yes.
Councilwoman Avon Clayton?
Yes.
Michael Manzella?
Yes.
Jennifer Souter?
Yes.
Alexis Taylor?
Yes.
Eric Gallobo?
Yes.
Rick Lambert?
Yes.
And Barbara Chrisen?
Yes.
Thank you. Public comment closed.
Okay, now we are open for the board to, um, make comments on this application. If anyone has any comments that they would like to make? Anything by any, any, um, planning board member?
Well, Barbara, I guess if no one else will, I'll, I'll jump in. It's Mike Manzella. Um, I would, I would like to, you know, maybe put it up to the board to consider that, um, as a condition of approval, uh, murals be added to the north and south facades of this building. Um, that's one issue. The other issue that I, I believe I mentioned when we deliberated at the last meeting in January, and I brought it up again, at least at the first design review committee meeting, was I still do believe that this project would be better served if the goal is really trying to make something that the public can interact with. The project would be better served with some kind of service window for the, um, facility that would, um, help facilitate a need on the north end, which is food and beverage service, and, um, also make it more interactive to the public. So I, I would like the board to consider, um, both of those issues moving forward.
This is Jen Souter. I, I support both those ideas that, um, Mike has brought forth before. Um, I think they would go a long way in addressing some of the issues that we've been hearing, um, understanding there are a lot of issues and concerns in addition to that, but those two, um, increasing interactivity would be a big step.
Anybody else have, any else, anybody else from the board? Uh, maybe some of the people that were on the design review committee, or that, uh, they have anything that they would like to add?
Hi, I just, I wasn't on the design review committee, but, um, I, I too am not really happy with what's been proposed this evening. And I also would like to see, uh, murals on the north and south side of the building. Uh, when I look at, I, I have to kind of agree with the public. It's been six months, and this is what we've received.
This is Eric Gallobo. Um, Alexis, um, Rick and I were, and Barbara were, um, members of the design review committee, and our charge and remit was to review changes specifically to the fence, not to, um, review the potential for murals on the north and south facades, which has been mentioned in many other contexts. So, um, while the result may not have netted murals on those sides, I believe it was the consensus of the, the design review committee that the applicant did address many of our concerns by changing the rhythmic nature of the inset in the fence to match the, um, placement of the lamp posts, um, and also made some, um, changes to allow some greater levels of transparency. Now, again, our remit was not to decide whether or not a fence was correct, or whether or not there were murals on the north or south facade. And when we reviewed that, when we reviewed what we were, what was within our scope, we did so under the consideration of the design of the fence facing the boardwalk.
Okay. I know that, that, uh, we have discussed that we would like the, uh, public arts committee to be involved in the discussions about... in the discussions about what these murals should look like, how they should be maintained. And they certainly have that eye that would know what's appropriate in that area. There are, and I'd like to make sure that within the, within the resolution as far, as far as regarding conditions, is that the maintenance of these, these murals, and I know that we're not quite sure what material they will be on, but I'm sure that the part of public arts commission knows what is appropriate. And I'm sure that the applicant will adhere to that, and that's what I'm asking for, that, that that's what's created. We have heard there are, there are many things that have happened over this time, and it is a disappointment that our jurisdiction does not cross over to other areas that the public is concerned about, and we can't be, unfortunately, we can't be held, we can't make any judgments about those areas. And I've, I've already mentioned that in, back in my January comments. So I won't mention them again, but that is, that's, that disappoints me. I do also see that there are some things that I think that the planning board should do going forward and bringing up to the city to make some modifications on some documents that are almost 20 years old at this point. So that's something else, but that really has nothing to do with any resolutions, conditions, or anything like that. That's something that happens with the planning board, between the planning board and the council in the city. So that's really pretty much all I have. My comments were made back in January, the 25th. And I, and I still stand by those.
This is Alexis Taylor. I just want to thank my colleagues on the planning board and the applicant, but also the members of the public for their comments. This has been a very, very long and important and deliberative series of meetings for the planning board. And I think that having the public voice is essential in all of these applications. So I want to thank the public for their thoughtfulness. I want to thank them for keep showing up. And I want to thank them for voicing their opinions and just know that we were listening. As Barbara has mentioned, there's certain jurisdiction that we have and that we don't have, but I think that whatever decision the board arrives at, you know, the public opinion having being voiced really does matter. So I want to thank you all.
Hey, hey, it's Moore. Can you, it's Moore. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, I got a bunch of notes here. So I'm, I think the last speaker said there was no support. Be it support or no support, I'm going to tell you truthfully, and John Moore's never lied to anybody. Eventually, this pool club is going to be built. It's totally legal. And all I'm trying to do, and I think the rest of the board is trying to do, is make it look as pretty as on the west side, the north side, the top side, and the east side. So we have a little bit more work to do there. Again, to me, a fence is a fence, be it horizontal or vertical, and again, truthfully, a new fence to me looks like freights from the farm market, no big deal. As far as like somebody saying we should renegotiate, believe me, this council has tried to renegotiate with the developer for the past five years. So I mean, okay, we'll, we'll, we'll try to renegotiate again. But it's not going to happen between the time this pool cup is built. As far as the public arts committee picking the murals, to me, I, I don't give a darn. I mean, I'm sure they're going to be beautiful murals, and I'm sure our public arts committee will have an input on that. Again, it's just trying to get the north, the south, and the east, which truthfully, anybody going down the west side is driving a car at 25 miles an hour to 35 miles an hour, and it's like just blowing by. And the east side is the prettiest side of it, so nobody's seeing the, the three sides that count. And the north and south sides are not alleyways. I mean, they are, they are major conduits into the beachfront where thousands of people were, were walked every day. I, I, I think we're on the right path. Again, I appreciate the committee. I think you did a good job. I appreciate the applicant for delaying this another two months so we get this right. And hopefully, we'll get this right within like the next like couple of weeks or now, a couple, next couple of months, and we'll all be happy with it. But anybody that thinks that this beach club is not going to happen, you're totally wrong. It, it, it's totally legal. It's going to happen. We're just trying to make it look right. Thank you.
Anyone else?
If I may, if there are no other board comments, Madam Chairwoman. Just to respond to two of the items that we heard. The first on the concessions, I should have mentioned this earlier, but there are existing agreements, as you know, that govern who runs the, the concession pavilions, and that Madison Marquette runs the other pavilions where you see the restaurants. Asbury Partners, we don't believe, has the ability to do concessions here, but that's not within our purview under the redevelopment documents. But that's just to address the, the issue that was brought up by Mr. Manzella. And we know that because we looked into an issue like that when the city asked us to look into providing concessions at other areas in the north end. So it's not a planning board issue, but I just want to bring to you that it wasn't for lack of consideration on our part. And then second, on the murals. If it's the board's consensus that murals are appropriate on the, the walls, and when I say walls, I mean of the building, not the fence, on the north and south side, the applicant would be willing to put murals there as well. We do ask for the, if the arts commission thinks that five murals, you know, three in the back and two on the sides is too many, that would be within the discretion of the arts commission, but we're willing to put five murals there if that's what the arts commission thinks is, is appropriate. One on the north side wall, one on the south side wall, and three along the fence.
Thank you.
Hey, hey, Moore, is an excellent point as far as who has retail rights. As far as from the boardwalk to Kingsley, it's not I Star, it's Madison Marquette. Thank you, Ms. Smith.
Thank you.
I do agree that the, as part of the conditions that the, that the arts committee, they certainly know better on what would look best. So I, I would be fine with leaving that to them to help us navigate through that process. Does anyone have any suggestions as to? I, I don't have a roadmap for this, Jack.
Hey, well, once you're done discussing it, applicant has indicated based on comments by the board that the applicant would be willing to put a third mural up on the boardwalk and up to one on the north and one on the south as a condition of approval, with the condition being that it would be submitted to the arts commission, the, whatever that committee, the appropriate name of the committee is, for their review and approval. It's up to the board now to decide if that's the way they want to go, and it's time to decide the case.
Question, procedural question for you. So the topic of tonight's testimony has been entirely kind of the murals and fence and everything else. If there are additional conditions, is that something we can generally bring up now?
Yes.
Yes.
And then my other question is, can I direct a question to our board engineer without subjecting all of us to the cross again?
Yes, to, to, to Jason, you can, as long as it doesn't, it's not an, an issue that's going to need to be vetted and, you know, back and forth type of thing. Well, you know, I mean, a comment's one thing, but get into detail, then, you know, that, that, we'll have to see how, I, I don't know the question, so. Can't call it a ball or a strike until the ball's been thrown.
All right. Jason, Mr. Victor, I have remaining concerns that, and, and we've, this, the testimony has gone previously, that this is at the design phase, that all of the engineering and structural and construction documents, you know, ultimately will be submitted, and I understand that that comes after planning board review. So it's not something that we comment on, but that we can make suggestions or kind of requirements of an additional review that would come as part of the construction documents. Is that correct?
That sounds consistent with what I recall, yes.
Okay, so I have, I'm, I'm not a structural engineer, but I have lingering concerns about the structural reinforcement integrity, everything else of a pool in a FEMA V-zone. And, and the reason is, I mean, it, these have largely been banned by many other states, local jurisdictions. Miami will no longer allow a pool in a V-zone for many reasons. I understand that FEMA still allows it, although they recommend that it be perpendicular rather than parallel. This is a parallel pool. So ultimately, it comes down to really the, like, the structural engineering of how the pool is designed because it is beneath the flood zone. Essentially, like the actual bottom of the pool goes lower than the lowest horizontal member. And I'm wondering if that's something that we can have an additional engineering review and/or actual have like structural calculations in order to make sure that the pool in certain very determinable future storms will not lift and cause damage to adjacent structures.
So the, the applicant, I apologize, I got a half a voice going on here, but the applicant structural engineer did submit some information relative to that, and I found that to be consistent with the rules, regulations, and general engineering practices that we would see. So I'm comfortable with it from that standpoint. If you would like a thorough review of those calculations, we can certainly do that. Sure. I think that's what your question was, and we can do that if you like.
So then we can add that to conditions?
Yeah, similar to when we have other engineering issues that are outstanding in Jason's report, and we tell them, applicant, they must submit revised or new calculations for Jason's review and approval.
Okay, excellent. And then just to specify further, Jason, if you could also review the breakaway walls and those requirements, because everything would, would need to be breakaway. Yeah.
All right, so that, so we have that as conditions.
Alexa, what was your second comment? One was the V-zone?
Right, so another requirement is that anything that is below the, and I can't, we revisited this so long ago, but I think the base flood elevation is, they designed it to 7.9. Everything that exists below that elevation has to be breakaway.
Jason, in when we do the resolution, if one is forthcoming, we can address what, you, you understand in engineer speak what Alexa's referring to.
Absolutely.
Okay, okay, I got it. Okay, I got it.
And I'd just like to also clarify with, with Jason that are there any variances, exceptions that we have to be concerned about?
None that I see. Everything has been addressed throughout testimony. They came in largely compliant. By the time all comments were addressed and resubmissions were made, I, I find them to be fully compliant.
Okay, just wanted to make sure and get it on the record.
And there's a point I'd like to make about that is that, you know, and, and I should point out that I'm a non-voting member for this application. There was a point at which the applicant made a major redesign of the building during which all of the design exceptions for the waterfront redevelopment zone that they were seeking were then removed. So the design that we are looking at does not, as well as the jurisdictional issues you point out, pointed out, Madam Chairwoman, the building that we're looking at complies with the regulations in the very waterfront redevelopment zone text that was formulated lo these many years ago and with much input. We can argue endlessly about whether or not it represents what we as a community want today, but it's what we are bound by. And I made the point when the applicant came in that we shouldn't look at design exceptions as bad out of hand because those, the exceptions to the design may be addressing issues about aesthetics, style, accessibility, many other things, equity, that the plan that was written 20 years ago does not address. And so in the future, I hope that we can, I do believe that the board should really look at how the waterfront redevelopment plan reflects the needs and desires of our community. And as a longtime member of this community, I don't think the waterfront redevelopment plan is currently doing that. And so when these design exceptions come before us, we should look at them as opportunities to evaluate what it is that, you know, is, is within our, within our jurisdiction to deviate from or not deviate from, and the reasons for doing so. And we have not been asked to deviate from the existing plan. That's my only point.
Thank you. Does any, do any other board members have anything else that they feel that should be included in resolution conditions?
So Barbara, this is Mike, going back to your suggestion, were you suggesting that one of the conditions of approval be that murals, three murals be placed on the fence and one mural each on the north and south facades, subject to the approval of the public arts commission, meaning they would have, are, are we, are you suggesting that we would cede our jurisdiction to them to decide how many murals? Is that what you were?
I, I personally feel that, that they know better than personally me. I am not an artist or an architect. If you feel that there should be some, some, they should come back to us or come back to some group, some subgroup, like the design review committee or something like that, with your thoughts as to how many there should be, that's fine. Or what, what, what are you thinking, Mike?
May, if I may, help a little, maybe, may I jump in? Okay, we wouldn't be ceding anything. We're not going to take our approval powers and give them to an outside third party. I think the ordinances as written in the city require all murals to be reviewed and basically approved by the committee, the, the arts committee. I don't recall the exact formal name of it. We would make the decision that we want to see one, two, or three, or however many more, and where we want them located. Insofar as the aesthetics of them, that's, that you can allow the committee. In terms of the design, that sort of thing, you can go with the colors and things like that. But in terms of whether or not you, we want murals, how many murals, and where, that's the province of the board, not the design, not the arts committee. So you wouldn't be abdicating or giving away any of your jurisdictional powers. You would maintain them. A, you'd be saying we want X amount, and B, where we want them. The only thing we're saying that the, 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 uh, arts committee would do is actually get involved with the, with the applicant and create the actual design of, of the art. Because they're the people that sit on the committee and they're artistically inclined and perhaps we are not.
Then, then what I would ask is that, is there, um, from our board members, uh, what are their thoughts about, you know, the north and south side? Should they have murals or shouldn't they have murals? If we have to put that into the resolution, we should be in agreement. I'm in agreement that there should be three facing east. I don't know if that's what the board feels, uh, but I'd like to, maybe we should talk about that.
I just, I, um, I would like to talk about it and generally get the board's opinion. I, um, want to bring up something that did come up, and I believe Eric raised it during the Design Review Committee, which is, I, let's not so narrowly define that there must be murals to the exclusion of other art installations. Um, because I think that, um, there are many, I mean, and again, we will leave this to much more creative artistic types, but I think even having an art installation on the walls, um, outside of kind of our strict definition of a mural, you can imagine, um, something that kind of protracts, you know, I think about the, um, uh, sorry, the installation on the side of one of the pavilions, which creates a shadow of the, you know, words on a building. So like some kind of artist installation is matters, but I don't want to strictly prescribe it as murals.
Mm-hmm, that's fair.
That's fine. If you're going to do that, once you get into structural items, then you need to see them because they alter the facade of the structure. And that's the province of the planning board to decide the structure, how the structure is going to look and so on. It's, I'm talking art, one thing, paint, something that's against the surface of something's one thing, but the actual, let's say there might be some, they might propose some pieces of sculpture, I don't know. Uh, and, and it may be very, oh, well and good, it may be great, but you might have to create an alcove to put it in. You might alter the wall, you might do that. And once you start altering the structure, then you're deviating from the plans that were approved.
I mean, this is such a like.
I mean, I'm not saying you shouldn't do it.
Like Jack, would you consider the installation, you know, there are a series of strings, colored strings installed at the, um, uh, casino? Would you consider that a structural?
I don't know what's at the casino.
That's true, it's unfair.
It's the same thing that was there last year, two years ago.
We can't assume that everyone's been there, yeah, um.
No, I get it. I'm not saying it's a bad idea. I'm saying it's a good idea, you know? Maybe, maybe the applicant can come up with something even better, I don't know. But if, if it's going to be something that starts to alter the structure, that it's more than just paint on, on a wall in, in a creative way, which is art, as opposed to me doing it, which would be garbage, okay? Well, that's what, that would be the end result if I tried to do it. Nobody would think it's art.
Some artists garbage.
Yeah, no, it would be horrible. But, uh, you know, beyond that, that, that's fine for the committee to do that. Uh, we did that down on the First Avenue Pavilion on the ocean, on the west side of the building. And the board ultimately saw it, but it was great. Uh, but there wasn't anything protruding and protrusions may be the best thing. I, I saw Jennifer doing a little, a little somewhat of a nod of approval.
I happen to like the strings, but that's.
They're great. I mean, that's what you want. I'm not, I'm just saying.
I have no idea.
Yeah, you can go to the committee, but something like that's got to come back and the board's got to say, okay.
Can I suggest that rather? We don't want to get into an endless loop of trying to figure out what art is. I mean, I know that's like an age old philosophical question. So can I suggest that if we will go to the Public Art Commission for approval of murals or any other, you know, non-structural art installations, uh, for those surfaces? On understanding that we're not going there to add structural pieces, but also Ms. Taylor, your, you know, recommendation that we're looking at murals in a, in a broader context. So we'll go to the Public Art Commission for murals or other non-structural, you know, public art at the discretion of the board. That, that's just my suggestion, but again, I'm not trying to designate.
And if you get there and the, the consensus is between the committee and you, that something structural in, something physical beyond paint would be the best thing to do, then you just got to let us know and come back for that. I mean, that's all. I'm not saying not to do it. So I gotta think like a lawyer. I think like an artist.
Right, but I'm happy to have it to be at the discretion of the arts committee, understanding that there's certain legal thresholds that make it come back to the planning board that I really can't, I, I don't.
I can, I can, I can structure it in a way that.
Okay.
If it goes beyond the powers, we're not, if, if, if it goes beyond the powers of the committee, the str, the, uh, arts committee, and we're in a sense abdicating our powers, then, then I can structure it not to allow something like that to happen.
All right, but otherwise I completely trust the discretion of the arts committee and, um, and also the creativity of an artist to come up with something that's impactful and not structural. I think that's a very interesting criteria for an artist to have, and sometimes they work better with parameters.
Have we, have we, uh, agreed that, that we would like these on the, uh, the north and the south side as well, or?
Yeah, Barbara, this is Mike. I think that, you know, it doesn't fix some of the underlying issues that have been brought up, um, with the architecture, but I think that it at least creates a more, um, aesthetically pleasing and interactive experience if we had art on those blank walls on the north and south side. And I do still believe that a, a third mural or non-structural public art installation is needed on the east side.
All right, so it sounds as though, um, what's up for, uh, what's up is the, the three murals on, three murals or art structures or whatever we want to call them, uh, on the east side and one each, uh, or on the, on the north and the south side. Though, though I agree with you, Mike, that it doesn't take care of the, most of the issues that people are concerned about, it does provoke interest.
Being, that being said, if there's a motion and the motion is to approve, or whichever way the motion goes, uh, before you vote, I need to know the rationale for your vote. And I need to know if it's your belief that the applicant is complied with the WRA and the applicable regulations based on the testimony presented.
Are there any other resolutions, conditions that people would like to include?
Jack, did you have any, a list of any that we have recorded?
Every resolution of approval in the waterfront redevelopment area has seven to 10 standard conditions, which are, uh, compliance with CAFR permits, all of that regulatory stuff. If an outside agency, they have to go for outside agency approval, they altered the approvals granted by this board, they must come back to the board for this board to review and make approvals as well for, to any, any amendments imposed by any state, county, DEP or anybody else. But A, I go through the motions about compliance with the CAFR permit, uh, things of that nature. Jason usually has one or two comments about engineering details. Uh, and that's essentially it. If it's a subdivision, we talk about a MAP filing or deed filing, that type of thing. This is not the case. Uh, and that's the way it usually goes.
Okay. Um, all right, based on the, uh.
Excuse me, I'm sorry.
Go ahead.
Plus you get an opportunity to look at the resolution and you can question me about the conditions that are in there to make sure that they are what you are. They're not my conditions, they're your conditions. I'm just a scribner. So when you review the resolution for adoption, you have to tell me if you think something, you need explanation or you think something's right or wrong or should be different.
Okay.
Okay.
So, so pretty much outside of those that you'd mentioned, we also are looking to add the, the, the structural conditions around, around the pool that Jason had those discussions about, uh, the discussion about the murals are in there.
Yes.
Is there anything else that outside of, uh, that?
I have mural maintenance was one of the.
Yes, we need to make sure that the maintenance is, is appropriate there, um.
Okay.
Okay. All right, um.
Hi, this is Rick, I have a question.
Yes.
Um, so the applicant, um, that proposed, you know, that proposed to build, one of the issues with the public has been the, is the fact that it's a private club. And the applicant as well within their right to build a private club because it's allowed. Um, I, I think it would have been better public relations had they built a public club first and then built a private one later, but, you know, they were within their right to do what, what they're doing. But they are planning to build a public club at some point. Um, are we allowed to have some kind of a stipulation or requirement that the public club be built within a certain amount of time from the completion of the private club?
No.
No?
They're mutually exclusive. One application has nothing to do with the other.
Okay, thanks.
Just a point of clarification, I.
And, yeah, um, okay, maybe we're both going to say the same thing.
Yeah.
The public club has to be built by Massa Marquette, not I-STAR.
Okay, I didn't realize that. Thanks. Thanks for that clarification, John.
All right, John, are there any, are there any restrictions as to by when? Does, does it have anything to do with this project or no?
Uh, I believe it's like 18 months and again, Michael or Ms. Smith, correct me.
Yeah, I believe it's, uh, I forget the exact time period, but the approval of this club, I believe, triggers the timeline for that public pool, I believe.
So I, I will be honest and say I don't have the documents in front of me, but whatever the contracts say or what they say, they're not something that could be altered by the planning board. But whatever specified in the contracts is what, you know, what's required.
Okay.
So Jack, is there a resolution or is there a condition on the building sign that we typically do? Uh, does that get a further review or approval?
It depends. Sinage, if we approve signage as part of the application, no. If, if the applicants come in and tell us we'll come back, and when we get appropriate tenants in a certain structure, they will apply, they'll comply with the sign ordinance requirements. And if they don't, then they need variances and they have to come back to the board or zoning board, whatever the case is. But I don't, I don't, we don't have that here. I think the signage here has been part and parcel of the application and been addressed. So whatever that signage is, that's part of this application is going to be approved.
And we don't have to put into the, any of the resolution, any, uh, the conditions, anything having to do with hours, noise, capacity, alcohol, things like that. That's all part of the city and it is under their jurisdiction, correct?
Yeah, we don't, we don't have any ordinances that is part of the site plan process that we review that. That's all other areas within cities, province that govern hours of operation, govern issuance of liquor licenses and occupancy loads and things like that. Obviously, we, we're not approving a building if they decide to put in, uh, like 4,000 people in there and the fire code says you can only have 500, we're not going to, we, we don't get involved in it. That's for the fire official. They set the occupancy limits and they enforce the rules.
Okay. Anyone else have anything before, um, we make a motion?
Um, I would also offer up a condition that, um, any, uh, on-street parking spaces taken for the construction of this project be, uh, the city be compensated for the ordinance.
Doesn't the city, if I may, doesn't the city have to approve the use of on-street, of loss of on-street parking spaces during construction, phasing and the like? Jennifer?
Hey.
If the city, if you're going to block off a portion of a city street or city parking on the street, aren't, are you not, or are you required to go before the mayor and council to get permission to do so?
I don't know. I'm actually not familiar with the, the ordinance and whether it requires compensation, but if there's an ordinance that requires us to go before the city council, then.
A contractor can't just block a public street during construction without some type of permission from the owner and overseer of that street, which in this case is the city of Asbury Park. Uh, John Moore?
Well, I, I definitely agree with Mr. Manzella because go down Lake Avenue and see where somebody just took black paint blacked out our parking spot. So I agree with, with Mr. Manzella, it's got to be part of the resolution.
That's fine.
I think having, yeah, having it as resolution compliance makes sure that, you know, as the, the final construction documents are being reviewed, if anything, you know, if, if parking public spaces are being taken to, for the construction that the city's.
I'll, I'll put something in that says if they're going to do that, they have to go get the appropriate approvals. We can't tell them they can do that. We can't give them permission to use the public street to, for.
No, no, yeah, no, I'm not, I'm not suggesting that's the condition. The condition is if, if public street space is required to, um, you know, in the final construction staging documents, that, that the city be compensated for the city ordinance, that's all.
Well, I can't tell you if they, we can't tell them that they got to pay the city. We have to tell them that they have to go to the city and then it's the mayor and council's call as to how that's going to work. Isn't that what occurred over on Third or Fourth Avenue when the other structure was built? When they, when, if they took over city property, wasn't there, didn't they have to get approval from the mayor and council?
Agreed.
Yeah. And if the mayor and council say, we're going to lose all this or whatever, you got to pay such and such for the privilege of doing this, that's between the applicant and the, and the governing body.
Okay, as long as there's a condition that speaks to.
I'll put something in there that says, hey, you got to go there. You can't just take over street property. But whatever the conditions are, are between the two appropriate jurisdictional powers, which in this case would be the mayor and council.
Thank you.
Okay.
And then is there, is there any conditions on, um, maintenance of, um, any plantings that are typical, like landscaping that's typical in, in waterfront projects?
Well, other than it's the obligation of every property owner to maintain their property. I mean, that's, that's what we've always operated. We, because we don't go in and enforce that. If, if, if they, their plantings die due to winter storms and the like, it's their pretty, makes a lot of sense. It's their obligation to go in and fix that, replant the plantings.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Okay, can I get a, uh, a, a motion to, um, approve this project based on the resolution, uh, the, the conditions that have been mentioned? Um.
Move it, Mike Manzella.
I second it.
Okay, before we vote question, i- is this preliminary and final approval without knowing what we're going to do?
Knowing what we're going to do about what?
Do what?
Knowing what we're going to do about what?
All the stuff we've been talking about the last half hour.
Well, the only things that are going to happen is the, the, the motion, I believe, is going to be to allow the, A, to require the applicant to put in three more murals, one in the front and one on each side. B, you're going to send it to the arts committee for the purpose of working with the applicant to come up with the design of those murals. And then, uh, B, another condition would be that they have to satisfy Jason with the, uh, appropriate engineering documents. He says he already has some of them. If he requires more, they have to give him more for the, uh, V, uh, zone, location of the pool and the secondary item that, uh, Alexis brought up, um. And the construction staging, that's nothing that we would need them to come back to us for. That's something they would go to the mayor and council for. So I don't know, and, and it's entirely up to the board whether the motion is for preliminary or preliminary and final, subject to conditions. That's entirely up to the board.
And, uh, Mr. Sheperkov, I may, you, you mentioned the murals. It's three along the boardwalk, one on, one on the north and one on the south.
Oh, I misstated that? I'm sorry. That's what I meant. Yeah, one more on the boardwalk and one on the north and then one on the south as well.
Right, the, uh, the vote as, as I put it out there for the resolutions and the conditions were for preliminary and final.
Okay, without further ado, I have a motion by Michael Manzella and a second by Barbara Krizak. I will now take vote. Mayor John Moore.
No. No.
Councilwoman Avon Clayton.
Now remember, I want reasoning. Tell me why you're voting. I, I have to know for resolution uh, purposes and potential appeal purposes, I have to be able to set forth to the appropriate jurisdiction or appropriate court, why, why the board voted, members voted the way they voted. So.
Mayor John Moore.
If, yeah, Mayor Moore, if you, if it's no, just tell me why, you know, you, whatever it is, it is. Just tell me.
Because I do not believe the applicant has met the desire of the board with too many maybes. That's my feeling. Sorry. I, I don't know. And again, like, you know, every now and then we're asked why we vote no, why we vote yes, but a lot of times we're not asked why we vote no, yes. So it's confusing to me. My vote is a no.
Okay.
Thank you. Councilwoman Avon Clayton.
She's muted.
Sorry. Uh, my vote is a no. So I still don't believe that the east wall meets the requirements for interacting with the public. Um, I, I know that a lot of time has been spent with it and, but I, I can't support it. I'm really not happy with the wall. And I think that something better could be designed.
Thank you. Michael Manzella, how do you vote?
Well, well, I don't support, um, the use of this, uh, land and uh, the unfortunate fact is the planning board was handed this as a, a use that was consistent with the waterfront redevelopment plan. I do believe that the applicant has sufficiently, um, proved that, unfortunately. Um, and, you know, enough modifications have been made to the design that, um, I would vote yes.
Thank you. Jennifer Souter, how do you vote?
Voting yes on this application. I think the applicant has proposed a project. Um, the project meets the requirements that they are currently required to meet. Uh, having said that, I certainly acknowledge the concerns raised by the public who, who have raised concerns. Um, and I share some of them. Uh, I have concerns about development on the boardwalk because, um, it's certain development on the boardwalk period, which is things that we can't address at this time in the purview of the planning board. Um, but due to what we know, science has shown us in terms of the coming sea level rise and climate change, I'm concerned about, um, uh, development on the boardwalk. And so that aspect of an additional engineering review, I think is critical. That's been included in the resolution and that I think that these aspects of the follow-through of compliance, um, with what's been proposed and what is agreed to at this time has to be followed through. Um, the understand, I understand the concerns that people very understandably have about losing views, um, to the ocean. And that's something that I think is, uh, um, I think that most people that spend time at the, in Asbury Park feel very passionate about their views of the ocean and that's understandable. Um, I think that the fact that it's, this applicant has the right to build there, um, that something is going to be built and that they've met the requirements, as I said, that are in front of them at, on this day. Um, and have had made, they've made an effort to come back and, uh, address, address requests, um, that have been made to them numerous times. Uh, I think the specific concerns regarding the interface with the public, uh, that there's been a lot of discussion about a feeling of exclusion, um, creating a place that is a feeling of exclusion. And I think that the applicant still, um, even with, if this gets approved tonight, has the opportunity to really make, to hear what's been said and to really make an effort to do everything possible, um, to make it an engaging space that whether or not you have, hold a membership in that club, that you feel, um, that it's an engaging space, uh, that's not turning its back to you. I think the murals will go, you know, some distance to that. I do also wish that there was more interaction, um, on the east side in particular, so that it really had a feel of, um, someplace that's inviting. And, um, I think that that's, that's all I have to say tonight.
Thank you, Ms. Souter. Alexis Taylor, how do you vote?
Um, so while I, I share with Jennifer and Michael, I object on, on principle, um, to the premise of a private beach club. Um, and I believe that the developer is really misjudging, um, their demographic. Um, in thinking that exclusivity has any place or will be attractive to anyone who's choosing Asbury Park. I believe that the applicant has, um, met the criteria, um, necessary uh, for me as a planning board member to, uh, to have to vote yes.
Thank you, Ms. Taylor. Rick Lambert, how do you vote?
Well, so I echo Alexis's comments, um, regarding the private versus public. But they're allowed to do that. And so it's really outside of our purview to tell them they can't build something that just sets up uh, an appeal for the applicant. I wish that the applicant had done a public facility. I think it would have been a much better public relations, uh, venture. They would have really endeared themselves in public, uh, much better than they, than they are with this, with this, uh, proposal. Um, I think they've responded to a lot of the comments that the public has made. They've redesigned the, the Ocean Avenue facade significantly. I think it's a, a nice design. The issue of the east side, um, you know, this, this use is, it's different than any other use that's on the boardwalk. So the requirements for um, really engaging the public, it's a different set of circumstances. This is not, um, you know, like a, a variety of commercial uses like all of the pavilions have. So to have that kind of interaction on the boardwalk side is, is not really practical. Um, they, when we, when they came before the Design Review Committee, uh, Ms. Smith indicated that, you know, that they, this was a discussion of how to make the east facade more palatable and try to create more engagement with the public and have it a little more interactive. And I, I think they tried to do that by creating these, these slats. Prior to that, it was just a solid fence and you couldn't, there was no transparency at all. And with the new design, you know, there's some visual interest with the murals, um, the setbacks and projections creates some kind of movement along that wall. The plant materials are, are interesting. And then they created these slats that, you know, kind of grade up from no, no slats to opening. So they did create some ability to see into the, into the, the use and, um, you know, there, there's a second story that kind of looks down into the pool. So you can see there's going to be activity up there. So I mean, I think they tried to, um, create more interaction with the east side. Um, it's a permitted use. It's, they, they're within their right. They, I think they've met the criteria for, um, that's set forth in the waterfront redevelopment. And, um, so, um, I'm going to vote yes.
Thank you, Mr. Lambert. And finally, Chairwoman Krizak, how do you vote?
I have to say that I'm disappointed that our jurisdiction as a planning board is, is, was limited in numerous areas that, um, were the most concerned, concern of the public were for this application. I, the, the public came, they spoke. Uh, I truly hope that the applicant hears what the public's concerns are uh, and learns from that. The exclusivity is something that's just not, it's just not really welcome here. Uh, but I do have to say that, um, my philosophy has been that we have to follow the law. Um, therefore I must vote yes for this application. It does comply with the waterfront redevelopment plan. Though, um, I don't, I, I think that things could have been better. Uh, but a lot of this, we really, it's not within our jurisdiction. And I think that in the future, perhaps the applicant might want to share some of those things that they chose not to share with us uh, this time, uh, as in, you know, the different, what's go, what's go, what will happen, uh, in this building. Uh, perhaps in subsequent applications, they might, might give us a little more of an inkling as to some of those things. But as I said, we have to follow the law and the law does say that I must vote yes.
Thank you, Ms. Krizak. So I have a total of five affirmative votes and two opposition. Um, that makes the, the application approved.
Thank you. Thank you to the board members for your two very, very, um, long and diligent years of work on this. We do appreciate it.
Okay.
Thank you, everyone.
All right. Thank you. Um, can I get a, uh, anything else before I ask for motion to adjourn?
No.
Okay. Can I get an emotion to adjourn, please?
Barbara, if I may, I'm sorry. Can I just put the next meeting upon the?
Oh, yes. Get the miss next meeting up.
Okay. Um, and if you can refer to your screen, our next meeting will be on Monday, June 21st, 2021. This will be the last, uh, virtual meeting for the planning board. Um, we will begin in-person meetings, um, beginning in July, 2021. And the information is on the screen. It's also, it will also be available on the website this week. And thank you, everyone.
All right. Can I get a motion to adjourn, please?
Marina, if I may, I thought the discussion was that the in-person meetings would take place in the second half of July? Barbara, is that correct?
I know. It's July.
I'm sorry. Then I stand corrected. Okay.
Uh, as long as the, the only thing that we're waiting for is that, to see what the room will look like and the configuration of the room to see if, uh, both the zoning board and the planning board agree to that configuration.
Okay.
And we hope to have that done before the July meeting, the first meeting of July.
And Barbara, we will be wearing masks or?
At this, at this, at this time, the, uh, the city does, uh, require masks in their facilities. So we will be wearing masks.
Understood.
Unless the city changes that. And you, obviously you always have the option to wear them anyway.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Did we hear a motion for adjournment?
I'm, I motion to adjourn.
Second.
Thank you. And motion by Barbara Krizak and a motion by, uh, second by Michael Manzella. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. Meeting adjourned at 9:23 PM. Good night, everyone.
Good night.
This is over. It's over.